I just looked at the date of the meeting and as I was pulling it up, pulling up the agenda. And I was like, December fourteenth, that's not possible. This is the wrong date. I just like, I can't read health. Fast time is fine.
Tomorrow becomes yesterday before you knew it was today, you know, it's a.
I'm just gonna give it one more minute if that's okay to stop. I know Tua's on her way over.
That's it buddy. No more for you.
Is that a dog?
That is my dog.
What kind of dog?
Hey guys, there you go. Hello.
Oh my, what a cute dog.
He's my office mate. Wherever I go, he's right there.
Oh my gosh, what, what kind of, I'm trying to figure out face on the cup. Is he some sort of spaniel or what is he?
He's a Brittany. Yeah, I bought him from, um, what's his name? Bob.
John Lari. Lari?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that's Jen's father. Jen Superling's father.
Yeah.
Oh yes, he breeds them. Oh, so this is one of the babies.
He breeds spectacular Britneys truly. I'm not just saying it because he's mine. My brother-in-law's had Britneys his whole life and he's seventy-two years old. They don't hold a candle to the dogs Bob breeds. They're beautiful and they're good dogs. I'm glad.
Hi everyone, sorry. It's Taco Tuesday, so.
What about Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
We're trying to figure it out.
Alrighty, um, I am gonna get started if that's okay. Um, you know, I'd rather just, or not rather, your dog is very cute. I'm a good dog person.
Do you have a dog?
I do. He's pretty awesome. I was, um, he's very lazy and it's wonderful because you don't have to entertain her. My husband said she's a, my, that she's a mostly sappy. And my husband was like, we're never getting anything besides a sappy ever again because it's awful maintenance. Anyway, okay, so I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Sustainability Committee on December fourteenth at seven PM. Alexis Khan present.
Craig Vasulow, President.
Tula Balistrassi.
Pat Turner.
John Lindsay.
Alrighty, thank you. Have everybody great. Thank you. I know Nate is planning on joining some meetings, but I don't think he can make everyone. I think he's just kind of to, um, joining the ones that he has availability. Um, so, um, wanted to start off, um, Tua had sent out minutes. Can you see my screen where it says draft minutes from November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one? Um, does anybody have any, do we want to move, go over them? Take like a couple of minutes to look over them and see if we agree with them?
Sure.
Everybody can see my screen. I'm gonna go to the faster. Can I go to the next page? Any questions or comments? Okay, did I say motion to approve the minutes of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one?
Second.
Uh, yeah, okay. All right, great. I actually have two other minutes that I realized I haven't distributed yet, so I'll send those after the call. For consideration, I think one of the minutes, all of us were present in one, I think it was just Craig and I, so, um, everybody else, you're welcome to read them, but you might not know whether, not their actor. But I will distribute that. Um, okay, so for the Sustainable CT, for the Sustainable Space Community Energy Challenge, the Climate Planning and Technical Assistance. I haven't heard anything back from following our technical assistance discussion. So I think there's still, I mean, I get the sense that this, because they're working with multiple towns, it's going to be kind of a slow process. I can follow up, but I haven't heard anything back recently with them. But I did reach out to Native Energy, following, you know, kind of through the Community Energy Challenge one-on-one, and as discussed during one of our prior meetings. We essentially, not that it was, anything had to be decided upon, but the kind of general feeling or consensus that we got out of, and we've had past discussions in this committee about it, but also it kind of was fleshed out in the Community Energy Challenge one-on-one was as an agriculture community as compared to maybe some of the other cities that are performing this technical assistance initiative. We are one of our largest sources of, you know, emissions and any kind of carbon contribution is through agriculture. And so if we can kind of focus on that rather than focus on, you know, like, public transportation or something that obviously wouldn't make sense in our town. And so on the heels of that, I reached out to Native Energy, which was the company that had Laurel Brook Farm, the article that John had shared about their composting project in East Canaan. Because they were sort of the technical advisor, they were the ones who kind of worked in collaboration with Laurel Brook on that. So I have a call scheduled on January tenth. I asked if he could join our Sustainability Committee meeting, but he said it's better to just, I think it was partially the fact that he doesn't, he probably doesn't want to be joining meetings at seven PM and, you know, that are still in a very exploratory phase. But also, he said, you know, let's just kind of like first have a preliminary discussion and then maybe at some point we could have a bigger presentation to your committee. But for anybody that's interested, I will forward it to you. It's scheduled for January tenth at four PM. Interestingly enough, I met somebody else separately in a social environment who works on carbon credits, carbon credit trading or carbon offset trading is his job, and he was familiar with Native Energy. So they seem to be kind of a big player, like he was very familiar with them and, and he works in New York. So it seems like they're kind of a reputable and well-established player in this field. And John, you probably, have you come across them before? Did you just, um, yeah, see what you have?
Yes.
Um, do you have anything else that you want to say about them?
No, no, you know, I, the fact is I literally deal with thousands of companies in, on an annual basis. So we're familiar with them. We've come across them, but I haven't done a ton with them.
Um, but I sort of thought that it would be, you know, a good, especially because you came across that article, like kind of a good thing, good place to try to start. Because I felt like after, I felt, and anybody can jump in on whether you share the sentiment, but I felt kind of like overwhelmed in what's an action step after this kind of, you know, not a decision, but sort of, oh, this is an avenue to pursue. And especially since we have this part of the Community Energy Challenge, but I didn't really know where to go from there. And I feel like if you have this potential model through this Laurel Brook Farm project that if Native Energy worked on that, at least we could just kind of pick their brain and see what that would entail and kind of know something and somewhere to go from here. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that or alternative ways to kind of go about this.
Um, this is gonna sound like a borderline excuse and maybe it is in some senses, but I found that when I reached out to various different members of the community or town for some of the initiatives we may have been working on, they didn't necessarily recognize our little organization and they certainly didn't necessarily recognize me. So it was hard to get their attention and I'm wondering out loud, I have a tendency to copy everybody on my communications and that's just kind of keep everybody in the loop as to some of the stuff I might be doing so that if they're in disagreement or in agreement, they can comment. But I'm happy to lead the discussion and go have a conversation. I just think it would be a little bit more, it would have some more gravitas to it if we requested it as a team as opposed to coming from me with this organization, because I think everybody looks at it and goes, wait, what is this and who are you? So I'm happy to lead it. I just have, I'm asking the group, is there a better way to get a little bit more punch behind the request so that, you know, somebody might want to stand up and say, hey, we'd be happy to spend a little time and explain what it is we're doing and how we're doing it.
You mean in terms of what request that you, who was the request need to?
I'll give you, I'll give you some examples. Early on, one of the things that I was looking at doing, and quite honestly, I just haven't had time for more personal reasons and professional reasons. I was gonna do an audit of the various different sites in the town that had solar arrays. And I got the information out and I got responses back from a couple of the individuals I sent it to. One of the individuals literally did reply back and say, wait, who the heck are you and who the heck is this group?
Oh no.
But I did get some responses back on it and then other, you know, individuals that I was pointed to that I should have been reaching out to just never responded. So it just seemed like there wasn't a lot of gravity given to the request to be able to do the audit. And I would, I would think if I were to do something of this nature, a private citizen would look at this and say, wait a minute, again, who are you and what are you doing? So I'm happy to draft something up. I'm happy to put it to each of you and make the recommendation that we go have the conversation and go sit down with them and see what they may have been doing and see if we can repeat the process or maybe make something that we can share with other members of the community that they may benefit from it. Just trying to, you know, out loud, figure out a way to put a little bit more political weight behind it. And I don't know how to say it. I mean, I'm guessing you have the idea.
For the solar array audit?
No, I mean, I kind of, I, you know, I'll continue with that because I did get some acceptance. It's really just been my schedule that's been impeding my progress on that. So I can at least do the ones that have been accepted. But I thought you were talking about going to talk to this farm that's done some of this work and see if we can generate some traction with them. And I, I'm happy to do it. But again, I think we need to find a way that they're not going to get a request from me and say, who the heck are you?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So the Native Energy, um, I was going to, I don't think we've approached and anybody jump in if, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't approached any farms yet to talk to them because we sort of felt like, I think on one of the prior calls, we said, why, I think Craig, you had mentioned, oh, Bree from Terra Firma might be a great resource because maybe she's already doing a lot of sustainable practices that could be kind of, you know, already like a model for some of the other farms. But we had said like, let's wait until we have something more concrete to propose and really have like a plan before we're really talking to any of the farms about this. Just because it could come across a little bit, you know, we want to make sure that the messaging and everything is really on point and in a way that will really benefit them. So I don't think we've had any discussions with the actual kind of town stakeholders in this. It was more to do a little bit of preliminary research and fact finding. Craig, do you want to jump in on that at all?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, you sort of said it all. It was sort of my thought was to have a plan in place before we brought it to people that were busy trying to get through their long workdays. I ran into this as an aside, I saw Bree the other day because I picked up some meat and we just kind of got reacquainted and that was nice. And I didn't, I didn't bring this up, but it's sort of like reconnected a little bit. So I feel pretty comfortable reaching out to her when we're like kind of ready to do something like that.
I did, um, maybe, I don't know if this is answering your question at all, John, but I did feel like I had, I've had a couple of conversations with Bob. And including Bob and Nicole and I attended the, I think it was on December third, but I'm just throwing that date out there. Is when we were awarded the bronze certi-, you know, the recertification at the the Sustainable CT Award Luncheon at the Connecticut Council of Municipalities, CCM, I forget what it stands for, but Convention of Municipalities. It was like their, their big convention, but then they also had the luncheon. Anyway, I was talking to Bob and Nicole about it and they both seem, Nicole, my understanding is she's going to be, especially for twenty twenty-two, once we have the regular meeting scheduled, she's going to be kind of our designated representative from the selectmen on our committee. So she's going to try to attend as many of our meetings that, as possible. And then he seemed very open to discussions about what's going on with, you know, what we're working on and being kept in the loop and things like that. So I'm almost wondering if, once we have something concrete to request, that's going to involve again, like stakeholders in the town and kind of rallying around certain requests or information sharing that maybe we get the selectmen involved because maybe they're, they have more weight behind some of the requests. I know, for example, when, when I've worked on the past in, on the Sustainable CT, you know, app, you know, all the application process for the certification. Oh, like there's a lot of people that I don't know. And so Mike in that case, or Christine would sort of run interference for me because they knew that if I reached out from Chelsea Bratton, like, you know, there's no, her, her email address is Chelsea Bratton, like, what does that have anything to do with the town? So he, they, between the two of them would sometimes like reach out on my behalf and then kind of loop me in with what, what I was looking for. So I don't know whether that, whether you think that might help?
Yeah, I mean, that, that falls in line with exactly what I was thinking. You know, as we move forward, engaging one of the first selectmen to be able to help us, you know, have some of these conversations. They're well-known throughout the community and throughout the town and that may, that may help push some of the discussions forward. So yeah, completely in alignment with what I was thinking.
And do you think, I don't know if when you had originally been reaching out to people in the town, whether Nate had already been in office in his, in his seat? Because he's definitely aware of what we're doing and I don't know if it would involve him in any way, what you were looking to get information on. But I feel like he's been a very helpful resource so far.
Uh, yeah, he didn't exist when I, when I first started, but the initiative was supported by Mike Ergo and I apologize, I forget the name of his admin support. Yeah, she was also very helpful and she actually was the one that went and gathered the names from the individual to say, you know, there's gonna be somebody reaching out to you, but that never really, some of it never really took off. Some of it did. And again, it's really just been my schedule that's prevented me from going out and doing the audits, but you know, in my mind, it was kind of supported by the first selectman and maybe it was my fault that I didn't really just copy everybody on it so that maybe some of the members of the managers of the solar arrays at the various different community centers would recognize some names and say, oh, okay, I know who this is. And reply back, I just put my name on it and put our organization on it. So yeah, maybe there's a better way to do it. But it sounds like the path you're taking would, you know, have some legs to it in, in getting the attention of the parties within the community that we would approach because they're going to recognize the first selectman and they're going to recognize the selectmen as well. So that makes sense.
And John, to your point, I know like we, um, picked out the initiatives that we wanted personally to do, but maybe as a team, like if one of us has a direct contact with someone that can help you, then that way we can collaborate in that direction. And so John, if you're having trouble contacting someone, if I know them, I can certainly reach out to them. And maybe we tackle it that way as well, because we are a young committee and I think a lot of people don't know that we exist or what we do or are gonna do.
Yeah, that makes sense. You know, as I think back on it, you know, again, probably the mistake that I made is I just sent the email from my personal email address and noted who we were representing. And what I really probably should have done is copied each of you on it. Cause many of you are, to your point, known throughout the community. And I'm kind of an unknown entity in some way. So that would have been a better way to approach it. So yeah, in the future, I'll touch base with each of you and some of the things that I'm attempting to do and maybe that'll give us a little bit more traction and as it was suggested, you know, obviously we can engage a selectman as well to, to get some weight behind it. So yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and I'm sure, and I, I'm sure none of you and I don't, I don't use my town email. I don't use my government email. Like, I use my personal.
I use my personal email as well. As a matter of fact, the only email that's in use from my corporate background is, is on this group. But when I do anything within the town, outside of this group, I use my personal email. I should probably switch it to my personal email even for this team, but that's a separate topic. I'll take care of later. But yeah, it's a little funny coming from John Lindsay at Gmail.
Okay, well, I'll send you an invitation. Anybody who wants to join that call again, I think it's going to be pretty preliminary, just to kind of hear a little bit about what they can do for farms of the type that we have in town. So I can certainly debrief you if you can't make it, but if you can, be more than happy to have you on the call. Um, then the second thing I wanted to mention is that Sustainable CT, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna pull this up. Came up with a, um, they just, can you see my screen? It says climate leader designation, twenty twenty-two pilot. Okay. So they've come up with this new, I just had, they just had a call that I participated in on, oh my gosh, when was it? Twelve, twelve, three. I'm losing track of days. Basically, it was recently. And the whole concept is almost like a separate certification for a climate leader, but really they're kind of teasing out. There's a lot of areas that are contained in the overall Sustainable CT certification program. So in other words, what I clarified with them, because it was very unclear when we first had the call and then it kind of came out through some questions and answers as part of this overall session. I don't know if certain towns have been invited to participate or how they're, oh, I think it's anybody who received a certification this year. So anybody who either bronze or silver, but who actually actively got certified this year is eligible to participate. And basically it's, I think it, the intention is that it's going to go, it's going to be like launched in January and go through the, kind of like through the winter and into the summer, almost where the next round of the certification cycle picks up. And they've focused on these, and this is, this is a draft because they wanted to get, have this discussion to kind of like further fine tune their thoughts on this, on this climate leader designation. But they've teased out these areas that they deem to be most impactful upon like reduction of carbon emissions, like, you know, really kind of energy focused, has a direct impact in that capacity rather than, you know, that part of what's been nice about, to be quite honest, about Sustainable CT is that in my mind, it's very like broad-reaching for the term sustainability, you know, the fact that there's arts and culture component and the historical aspect, equity and inclusion component. But this is meant to be like what communities are really leading from a Connecticut municipality standpoint, just really like taking an action at reducing, you know, helping mitigate climate change. And so it's put it into these buckets of action items that we would have to do in order to get this climate leader designation. What I did clarify is that you can do something in this that then will count towards, because a lot of these action items are are like contained within the Sustainable CT program. Let's say we do something in, in one of these categories over the next like six months. And then we get credit as part of this climate leader designation. We'll also be able to apply that credit towards Sustainable CT towards our going after silver. So they're not two separate things. It's just like this kind of like boot camp for something very specific that they're looking to obtain. And there was a lot of discussion, just this is additional color, but it's not going to be ultimately matter that much for the sake of this program because they're going to decide on it and we're going to get our marching orders. But there was a lot of discussion in this meeting as to whether it's more important, whether it's more important to just do the action for climate, you know, and climate change mitigation efforts and that kind of thing. Or how important is the measurement and sort of the compiling of data? So that we kind of know the baseline for what we're dealing with and then from there, doing the actual actions and then measuring how much, you know, emissions have been reduced as a result. So there, there was a lot of debate about that and I think most of the town said, you know what, we're too small and it's too much work to measure. Like, let's just do the actions that are presumably going to have an impact and not care so much about auditing and measuring and inventorying, if that's even a word, and then, you know, what, what's like the before and after, let's just do it. So there's more to come on this in terms of what the final version is going to look like. But I wanted to share it and also solicit your thoughts on whether do we want to even participate in this in any capacity? Do we want to, you know, it's a lot going on, you know what I mean? Between this and then we also have the initiative with the Technical Assistance of Great Plains Institute. So. the initiative with the Technical Assistance of Great Plains Institute. So, you know, do we want, are we concerned about diluting? And everything is kind of going to the same end goal. So it's not like this is competing with what we're doing in any way, but it's just um, I just wanted to put it out, whether you even want to bother with this or whether it's something that, you know, you want to take a path that.
So this isn't part of the list of current initiatives?
It is. These are, these are components of the um, like the overall sustainable, like if you look at now, they haven't released twenty twenty two's um, list of all of the action items. So we don't know for sure, but the intention as confirmed by Sustainable CT is all of these are kind of components of Sustainable CT certifications. There's a lot of overlap. It's just we, for example, could have gotten a lot of our, I'm just throwing this out as an example. We could be Sustainable CT certified at the bronze level, but not have a climate leader designation because most of our points were for open space, you know, or like we have a lot of, you know, I'm just putting something out there like, or we um, do invasive species mitigation and and according to this, they're wanting to focus so specifically on you know, greenhouse gas reduction that we'd have to make sure that we really like focus on these, whereas we could have potentially not done very much and, you know, we have, but like potentially we could have still gotten bronze by virtue of the other components of Sustainable CT certification and not really gotten much credit in these areas. And what they did say is a lot of the towns like are nearly just from their um, Sustainable CT certification level. A lot of them almost could like get this climate leader designation off the bat, just based on how, you know, you need a hundred points, which is less than certainly um, the, you know, we needed, we had three hundred points for the Sustainable CT for this this cycle. But you do you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's, it depends on how it breaks down in terms of what we've gotten credit for in these areas.
So I I I guess my opinion on the climate leader designation is that if we're doing a couple of these initiatives listed, because that's what's part of um, the vision for the town, then let's, you know, let's get those certain initiatives done and not so much focus on the designation, but if we are close to the designation and we just have a couple of more initiatives to do to get it, then let's do it. But I think our focus should be on the other initiatives first. I mean, the other designation first before this one.
Right. And I don't know, like, for example, John, what you're mentioning, the um, I I, you know, I I wonder if like if you did the all, I know it's not listed out specifically in this, but like the um, audit on this, you said it's an audit on the solar arrays, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, actually, if you guys are interested, I actually could share with you the documents that you go through to do an audit on a solar array. Very boring. But it's a documented process that you kind of look at what's there and you get some catalog information off of the older solar panels, et cetera, et cetera. So you go through the whole process. Doesn't necessarily have to do with streamlining solar permitting. But I'm guessing that could be a factor. I've never actually looked into solar permitting in the state of Connecticut, believe it or not. I hate to say it, I have people that do that for me, so um, I could easily look at it and or have one of my team members grab it because it's it's about ten minutes worth of work. Um, and take a look at it and see if there's a way to streamline the process. Um, I have a feeling in this town, it's actually relatively straightforward and it's because of some of the conversations I've heard within the community that it's a pretty straightforward process. And then there's a town vote um, to approve uh, some of the utilization of the solar arrays, but I I'm happy to do things like take a look at at things of that nature. And actually going through the list, there's probably a few things um, in there that we could you know, attempt to do that would garner us some of the actions that we're looking um, to put together for the objective is to reach silver, support zero emission vehicle deployment. Again, it's a relatively straightforward process to look at an internal combustion engine vehicle and determine you know, what the benefits are to go to zero emissions and they're often just a wash. As a matter of fact, I think some of you are aware that we did it for Mike, Mike Ergo led the discussion to, you know, replace one of the existing vehicles with an EV. And it ended up being a neutral cost for the town as a whole. So it's a pretty straightforward process to do. It's usually done on a vehicle by vehicle basis because of the performance factors of the vehicles and the size of the batteries in the vehicles, but it's, it's, it's doable. I actually questioned the conversation. I know there's a lot of dialogue that typically happens around this, but benchmarking and and tracking carbon footprint reduction and energy use, they're never perfect. Um, and that what my industry kind of looks at a lot. You look at the reporting and you've got to kind of look at it at an angle because they're never dead on. There are always estimates associated with it, but the intent is did you do something that could fundamentally lead to a reduction in carbon um, utilization? As an example, taking a metal halide streetlight and replacing it with an LED streetlight is based on the ampacity use of the light itself or the number of watts that run through the light. And you can do a pretty quick calculation that's not entirely one hundred percent accurate, but it gives you a rule of thumb in saying, yeah, I helped contribute because it went down by about this much. And I think the struggle is there's a lot of argument about how accurate was that? And they're kind of missing the point. It helped and it's kind of a guideline. So I think you could report on it if you don't really want to get wrapped around the axle of how incredibly detailed it can be or how incredibly accurate it can be. It just gives an indication of the progress you're making towards reduction in utilization of um, carbon based fuels. So I know there was a lot of words, but it's not too complicated to do it. It's highly debatable is the issue. So those things could be tracked. The high energy performance for individual buildings, that's a bit more tricky because although companies do offer it as a solution for audit purposes, um, and they sometimes do it for free, it's usually fairly expensive to do an audit is an example. My company gets a base price to walk onsite to do something like that of about seven thousand dollars per building. It's not something a lot of people can swing, but organizations do offer it for free. And they go through and they say, this is what we would recommend you do to help improve the overall performance of your building. As a matter of fact, our utility may offer it. I'm just not familiar with their programs. Again, relatively easy to look into and say, do you offer this? Is this something you'd willing be willing to do on targeted uh, town owned facilities? And, you know, they're, they're probably going to be pretty direct with the response back on how to do it. Or if they would do it. So they're fairly straightforward. I I'll be honest with you, as I was looking through this list, I was, I was thinking all these things are doable. Uh, it's just time. It's, and it's quite a bit of time. If it's a single individual, it's probably less time if it's multiple individuals, but there's learning curves involved and knowing where to go, what to do and how to do it. So it's all viable. Um, maybe the best approach would be have the team take a look at it and say, where do we think we could have the greatest impact? And what if it down to two or three?
This is a stupid question, but what is high energy performance for individual building? Like, what what do they mean by high energy performance?
Well, so what they're fun, I think what they're fundamentally doing, and I'll look at the detail associated with it, what what they're fundamentally saying is they want the building to perform at peak level utilizing utilizing as minimal energy footprint as possible or renewables associated with it. They want the facility to be, you know, reducing their their carbon energy footprint. So they're looking for ways to put windows in that are airtight reflective of the sun. You know, have proper circulation throughout the building, have the um, HVAC nu- units checked for efficiency. You know, making sure they've got variable action valves inside the building so that they're opening and closing on an appropriate basis. So you're not heating parts of building that you don't need to, things of that nature, pretty basic stuff. And it, and it does get a little bit more detailed these days on how they do it, making sure that the all the motors are energy efficient, all the furnaces, et cetera, are all energy efficient, hot water heaters are energy efficient, but you just go through a list and say, these are the types of things that we're looking for. And these are opportunities to improve the efficiency of the overall building itself.
I see. That makes sense. Okay. Um, yeah, I think what I'll do is once we get sort of the final draft and like more information on each of these areas of what it would actually involve, um, I'll bring it back to the committee and we can decide if we want to focus on some of them or whether this is, you know, to competing with our other priorities. So I guess stay tuned, but I just wanted to bring it up since I had uh, participated in that call and gotten a little bit of information about what the idea is behind it.
Alexis, do the numbers at the end of each of the various different um, bolted items, are they indications of the number of points that you can gain by achieving the activity?
Yeah. So I think it's a range based off of like in as part of this the Sustainable CT certification, each one of these would be an action like a higher level action. And then underneath there's all the like a, like a list of all the subactions. So it would be like five point six would have five point six point one, five point six point two, five point six point three. So I think the range is um, for example, seven point four, the fact that it's a range from ten to a hundred, it probably means that there's quite a few action items. And if you just do one, you get ten points, but if you got, if you did all of them, you'd get a hundred, all of them perfectly, you get a hundred. So to your point, if there's one or two that we seemingly like if we picked one or two that had kind of high value, um, you know, credit after it, we could just get, you know what I mean? We would only, we would have the chance to just do one or two really, really well and get the full credit.
Okay. I've got the documentation. You shared it before. You forward this, I can even this evening, I can go back and look through some of them and see if I would make a recommendation on where we could go. I I would actually guess the reduce energy use across municipal buildings and increased use of renewables would be relatively um, accomplishable for the town because I think they've been conscious of it to begin with. You know, with the solar arrays they've installed, the ones that I have looked at just don't have any battery storage. The solar arrays haven't been cleaned off in years, so they're not performing at optimal level. It's pretty straightforward things that you might be able to look at and say, okay, you can achieve, you know, twenty thirty points here, twenty thirty points there. To get to the highest level, I am guessing based on some of the things I read, and this was months ago, there's spends in, but there's, there's funds involved that would have to be spent and that's always going to be a bit of a challenge with the budget being so tight. So
Right.
I I wouldn't mind looking at, you know, some of the top items and glancing through them and then if you want to send this, I'll, I'll do it before I close out the evening.
Sure. Although I I I would hate, um, in case they change this, um, you know, in terms of ultimately what is selected as the actions that count towards this, but hate if you like looked at them and then ultimately, I mean, it's still probably going to be part of the Sustainable CT for silver certification, but I just don't want you to spend time if ultimately it's replaced with something else in the final, in the final uh, framework.
Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll take the recommendation, whichever direction you want to go, I'm fine. I don't, you know, if you're worried about me spending too much time, I don't think it would take a ton of time to look at some of the top items here and go through, because again, you had that on Excel spreadsheet and it was pretty straightforward. So it it's up to you. I I'm happy to look, but if you want to hold off until they have a a more finalized list, that's okay too.
Yeah, and you speak the language of a lot of these questions more than I do too. A lot of the stuff was over my head in terms of what the action required.
I think we would also, as a group, we'd have to look at some of these because I'm pretty sure we actually accomplished a significant number of the points in 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 one or two of these anyway.
Yes, 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 we have. That's a good question. I I was going to ask, and I don't know if they do this for us or whether we need to do this exercise, but I wonder if Sustainable CT would tell us based on where you stand now after this, I I'll ask the question. It doesn't hurt for me to ask. Like, what are our points for this climate leader designation? Are we at twenty or are we at seventy? Because we're, if we're seventy without having done anything new, then hell, let's just go for it. I mean, how hard do you guys need to get thirty points? But if we're at ten, you know, it's a bigger undertaking. So I I'll certainly ask that question.
Well, when, when will the actual list of the requirements for twenty two come out?
Um, for the silver certification or for this climate leader designation?
For the silver, for the silver.
They said it was going to be, so they talked about it during the um, luncheon, the awards luncheon. And they said they were trying to get it finalized in the next couple of weeks, but you know, I I would say by by sometime mid to eh, uh, mid to end of January, that they'll have it out. They said it takes them a lot of time to redo the next year. So I I I would say January, hopefully. John, I wanted to ask you on another topic. Um, this is kind of just circling back. We had had that conversation in a prior meeting about um, the uh, the park and rides and uh, recharging stations for electric vehicles. I think you and Nate had had been providing some color on that process. Um, and you said you had like kind of the access to the grants intended side, but that it would be important to um, have the state delegation weigh in on this before we looked into it further. Do you, do you know anything further on that? I wasn't sure what was kind of like the what we do next for to not, you know, totally drop the, not tap them all, but you know what I mean, like lose
Yeah.
on that. And there was an interesting discussion about it.
So um, this is interesting discussion because I I didn't really get a response back um, on regard to who in the state delegation would be able to put us in contact with the the right individuals. We generally know it's the Department of Transportation and the Department of Energy who drive the activities around um, electric vehicle infrastructure. It's pretty similar across the states. And the reason I've paused on it right now is because the Federal Infrastructure Act is probably going to get approved in some form or another uh, in January. And when that happens, there's going to be an allocation of funds to each of the individual states.
Right, right, right.
When those funds get allocated, it's going to indicate where they go. Um, who, who gets them? And so far, by the way, we're encouraged because they're not giving them to the utilities. They're giving them to various different organizations like the Department of Transportation, Department of Energy, and that's what we believe is actually a more effective use of the public funds. So once that gets done, you can actually look and say, okay, this organization received the Once that gets done, you can actually look and say, okay, this organization received the bulk of these funds. Can the state delegation then help us understand who we would reach out to? Uh, to propose uh some uh opportunities um and develop some solutions. There's pretty set guidelines. The public today isn't really aware of a lot of the details associated with it. And I wouldn't expect them to, I wouldn't want to because it's terribly boring, quite honestly. But things, oh, there's a lot of activity to say, let's get charging stations installed. But you have to be thoughtful about where they're going to be installed because driving habits are going to change. You're not going to charge at a gas station anymore. And that upsets a lot of people because they think businesses are going to go away. You're going to charge at home, ninety-five percent of the charging is going to be done at home. And then the rest of it's going to be done at destination locations where you would go to grocery shop or go to a mall or go to have dinner at a restaurant. So putting a charging station in a location that wouldn't have a related uh facility to make advantage of. It would be. Uh, an underutilization of the funds that would be provided. Many of these funds are going to be supplemented by, the federal fund's going to be supplemented by state. Funding, sometimes county and sometimes city. So. We're pretty passionate about using those funds thoughtfully, so there's not waste associated with it. So when you go in and present, you actually sit down and say, we think this would be best, and here's why. We think there'd be growth from a business perspective. We think there'd be full utilization of the individual stations. Um, for the vehicles, the different types of vehicles. And that's what you do. But the starting point, I, and that's the reason I paused a bit on this, is the federal funding. When that gets allocated, we'll really know where the money's going to go to within the state of Connecticut and we'll be pulled the zero in and and see if we can. Take advantage of that for our town to help our town develop an electrification plan. And there are some nice opportunities here. I wish I could say the park and ride would be beneficial because it's a great space for charging. But most people that own EVs aren't going to want to go charge their vehicle at a park and ride and stare out the two main roads. So it's just not that much fun. Town hall, interestingly enough, pretty good location for a charging station because there's access to the. Small businesses downtown, town hall, get thirty minutes of charge, you know, and then go about your business. So. There's areas that there's some benefit to it, and that's what we would help with. That's what I can help with.
How big would this space need to be, like in terms of a parking lot or something?
How big would the what be?
The the space, like the designated space of like a parking lot. I mean, does it need to be a certain size or could it just be?
No, you you can put one or two stations and one or, you can actually put one station to feed two vehicles in between two parking spots. Um, so they take up a relatively small space, but they're not inexpensive because you're not only. Running pipe and wire to the station, you've got to put some level of protection in front of them so people don't back into them with their vehicles. Um, or mount them on a wall so they're less likely to be, you know, hit or damaged. But it's, you know, they take up a relatively small footprint. Um, unless you decide you want to go high end and do a DC fast charger, which can charge a vehicle in thirty to forty minutes. First, they're very expensive, but the state funding, federal funding will help with that. Some areas will get those devices. But they typically start at the low end at about thirty thousand dollars a unit, and that's just for the unit. Once you get them installed, you're approaching sixty to seventy thousand dollars a device. So they're expensive, but there are going to be places that that makes very good sense to do that type of thing. Where there's going to be destinations that people are going to want to stop and charge and get a sandwich or something of that nature. Um, but the rest of the locations, they would use what they call a level two AC charger, and they're they're not as expensive. They can get up to fifteen thousand dollars, twenty-two to twenty-five thousand installed, less the more you install in a single location. Um, or you can get down to a very low end device, it's a very simple device. Which isn't recommended because you can't put them on a network. People can't see where they are when they're driving around in their electric car and 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 access them, but. You can get down to three or four hundred dollars for a device if you really wanted to. So there's a lot of thought that goes into it. There's functionality with it. You don't want to pay with a credit card. Do you want to give it away for free? Do you want to have some type of community signup where people recognize that they have an EV and the charger is going to recognize the community vehicle and. They don't need a card, they don't need a smartphone, they don't need anything, they just plug in and the charger will recognize the vehicle and say. You can charge this one. So there's a lot of different ways to do it, but. I'm just waiting to see where the federal funds go.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that information.
Everybody's bored to tears.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't know. I knew that there was, but it's helpful to know that, you know. There's going to be a lot more coming um in January, so it's sort of like doesn't make sense until we, it's very clear cut who to go to.
I I just a step further because it's relative to the entire discussion. Obviously, I tend to focus on electric vehicle infrastructure. Um, this is my background. But the federal funding is going to be advantageous for towns like this, and it's going to have a lot more to it than just. Electric vehicle infrastructure and following that, I I would guess would be something that he's probably going to do as well to see where those funds go. So that we can help develop sustainable programs um and utilize some of that funding appropriately for a lot of different things. Like enhancing the solar arrays, using battery storage systems to lower the town's overall spend. So. There's a lot of different ways to look at that funding that can actually help the town lower its overall annual spend um related to energy utilization. So. Looking at the whole federal program is going to be advantageous for our town.
That's great. Thank you, John.
It was just a piece on NPR this morning about the federal government committing to five hundred thousand. Charging stations by twenty twenty, twenty thirty, I think.
Wow.
So I'm I'm sure this, we're going to hear a lot more about it real soon. We'll all learn about all the different kinds of charges, but now we'll know about it, thanks, Tom.
Anytime you want a tutorial, it's one of my favorite subjects and I usually lose everybody in the first three or four minutes. I like, oh, God. So.
For listening.
You have a, you have a attentive audience with this group. Alrighty, um. Let's see, I I had distributed, um, it's kind of a running list. I I won't go over it in detail, but sort of the pending. The the action items that I went through after this recent sustainable CT certification. Essentially what I keep referring to is the low hanging fruit, like what we um got some credit for, but we just didn't get all the way. Far enough, um, and that was to feedback in terms of why we didn't get full credit for something. So I distributed those. I have some actions to follow up on. Um, you know, with like, I I talked to Christine about some of them, you know, certain things where I've just sort of thought, okay, I need to talk to this person, I need to talk to that person. But um. If you have any, like if you've, uh, I think, let me just make sure, I'm pretty sure I distributed to everybody, but if you see anything that you're like, oh. You know, I know where to find that, um, to Tula's point earlier about sometimes, you know, more, more um heads are better than one. Um, if you, if it, you come across something that you kind of know where to get this information or things that we can get it over the hurdle. Um, let me know. I'll just double, does that email ring a bell? I'm not sure. Um, I thought I said that, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think so. I guess so.
I can resend it, okay. Okay, Ben, um, the next item on the agenda, Craig, did you have any updates on the energy audit side or is that still?
I got a little bit, just quick, quick. I got some brochures, old fashioned paper.
Oh, yeah, that's what was, they were going to come.
Yeah, so I've got a stack of um of these uh having to do with the residential, and it's just simple and straight straightforward, just explaining how. Someone comes to your home and you save money. So um. My thought was to put some at town hall and some at the library. I'm open to other ideas. I think they sent me fifty, I can get more, but it's an easy way to sort of get the word out a little bit on it in a simple sort of way. And then. Um, there's some small business energy advantage brochures also. I I was wondering if there, is there like a small business association in town of any variety where there's a.
Maybe if you, maybe if we get him to Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Well, there was an organization, but it, I don't think it lasted long. But if you put them at the library, if you talk to Amy, she'll put them on the uh. Bulletin that the library sends out weekly, too. That that gets a lot of attention.
Good idea, okay.
Um, is, I think I remember from last time, to my question, remembering that there's no, that we're going to vote on the chair for the. For the Economic Development Commission. Is there a chair now?
So I actually haven't been following. Um, I know they have a new person appointed. Um, I don't know if the website's updated or not. Um, but I know there's still some vacancies on that committee. They should have, there should be theoretically a chair right now.
Still think Brett, which I think he's no longer chair, right?
Yeah, he had, he actually hasn't formally in writing um withdrawn from the committee. So there's not a vacancy for his seat until he withdraws from the committee. Nicole has, Brett hasn't.
Okay. Oh, right, because she's not on here.
Yeah.
Okay. So should you, would you recommend, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you can. Still wondering.
Actually, Nate might be a good person to hand him to, too, because with his, with his role, you know, he could distribute to. Anyone that, any business that wants him as well.
Did you say Mike?
Nate.
Oh, Nate.
Yeah.
How am I going to get these to Nate?
He should be attending the Economic Development Committee meetings as well, so. Um, maybe at town hall, maybe if you just leave a bunch at town hall and then ask, and then that way Nate knows they're there for him to grab.
Okay. All right, so I'll I'll leave um the residential ones, uh, town hall and library, and maybe the small business ones at. Town hall and tell someone to tell Nate.
I can shoot him a note just saying, um, so I have to email him anyway. So um, I can just say. Keep a lookout for.
All right. Yeah, yeah, good. Do that soon. Um, I also was able to gather some information about just the context for all this, so. Interesting data points, as of twenty twenty, there were not one thousand nine hundred and fourteen households in North Stonington. Interesting trivia.
Wait, can you repeat that?
One thousand nine hundred and fourteen households, as per Eversource. Um, between twenty ten and twenty twenty, so a ten-year period, two hundred and seventy-two of those. Have been energy audited.
Only two hundred and seventy-two?
We're at fourteen percent, which is low average in Connecticut.
And 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 stupid question, but is there some other. Organization from which potentially people would have gotten an energy audit, but just not through Eversource, or are they really the only?
Pretty, pretty unlikely, because like the people that, you know, they contract out for people, you know. Around town to do these things, but it's through the energized CT that they get paid. So it's unlikely that someone would do it of their own volition.
Okay. Two hundred and seventy-two of nineteen hundred households? Wow, okay, interesting.
Yep. So uh, there's some, there's some room there. I don't think it's going to change the world, but I think uh it would raise awareness in general and be good for town. So. I mean, I don't think slapping some brochures uh in two places is going to quite make us a uh energy. It was actually, it was on the. It was one of the action items towards the bottom of the list you just showed. I forget what the, what their wording is, but. I don't think it's going to get us points.
Well, I'm wondering if like, if um, Christine and I were just talking about social media posts from the town talking about our committee and that kind of thing. Um, and so I'm wondering if like, if we could ask them to do a social media post. And isn't there, so I guiltily admit that I haven't. Paid enough attention to what it it is, but I was planning on attending, I think, the new um community conversation thing. To, do you know anything about?
So that's um an initiative that the Board of Selectmen is um putting out there, but it's 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 specific, though. Um, I think the first question at the community conversation is going to discuss is what to do with the two ninety-eight middle school building.
Oh, right, okay, so it's not just like dialogues about.
No.
Okay.
No, no, but I, but you know, looking ahead and kind of off point, but kind of relatable is, um, I think maybe as a committee, we should do some sort of. Birthday event or um initiatives, like, you know, and bring up the energy audit, like something that we can, that day people are paying attention or whatever, like. Uh, like, you know, I'm one, I'm like one of those guilty, um, seventeen hundred people, households that have not done energy audit on my list. I just, it's one of those things, like, you know, I haven't done it, so.
Yeah, we have not. I mean, I think we pretty much know where we stand and we've done an awful lot of things and I feel like we need to. Do that extra step. Given the building we've got, I think we've done pretty much everything we would intend to do.
Yeah, it's it's certainly possible, but it's interesting because like, and they just give you stuff, you know, they'll they'll replace your light bulbs and they'll put in.
They already did it.
The insulation, right, you've done all that. It's cool when they they take this giant fan and they stick it in the doorway. And they blow it, right, so that you can actually measure and see like where the leaks are. I mean. I'm I'm sure you're doing a great job at your house, but there are a lot of people that come and use a little help, and it doesn't cost them anything.
I, we need to put in our weather stripping again, this, like every winter, we put in like a bunch of ugly stuff that tries to keep the windows from being drafty. And uh, God, I wish like we could just get a company. This is a little side tangent vent thing, but we have a couple of windows that we want replaced because they're very drafty and, you know, we just solve it with the. Plastic and ugliness, but um, you can't get a company to just do three windows, you know, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
They'll come and do it for your entire house for eighty thousand dollars, but they, um, you know, anyway. There's some efficiencies from that if they would, you know, do it in an affordable way.
You know, just to follow up on the sentiment, I couldn't agree with you more. We had two of the rear doors on our house replaced and they're like glass doors, so they're inherently. Not as energy efficient as they should be, but I've got a beautiful backyard, so I'm not going to lose the view. And we replaced, and it took us almost seven months to find a contractor to replace, um, you know, the the doors. And once they were done, by the way, my energy bills actually did drop significantly, but. It's a major expenditure. It's hard to find somebody to do it. So you're right, it's 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 a challenge all the way around. It's not, even if you want to do it, it's hard to get done. And and we all actually probably. And and we all actually probably know many of the contractors in town and like, those were the guys they ended up using. And they were, you know, they just got a ton of work. Thank God, they've got a ton of work. I mean, it's it's fantastic, but it's just hard to get it done. Hey Craig, when you had that done, I've never had it done. And kind of go at my own pace on some of those things. Did they actually provide a list of of the items that they recommended? Um you address in your home to improve the overall energy efficiency uh on a prioritized basis possibly?
Yes, yes, I I got a whole binder. I mean, they did a lot of it right then, as far as the weather stripping and the lights. Um but there was a list of, you know, these other things potentially would be beneficial for you to do above and beyond. And and here are some uh, you know, incentives if you do them, you know, replace the appliance or, you know, bigger stuff like that.
It's kind of interesting.
Maybe we need to do a P S I. Out there.
Um did I uh, I think Tua and I, we had, I had asked this, to your knowledge, is Bob doing a weekly? Um newsletter like Mike did, not newsletter communication.
I I've not seen one. I'll see updates from the town Facebook page, but I don't see um a scheduled uh weekly update.
Now, he specifically said he was not continuing that, which I don't know, I don't understand. I thought it was a great idea. And I I didn't look at it every single time, but it was there. And it seems like there was one that came out after, even though he said he wasn't gonna do it, but they haven't come regularly. And I think somebody should suggest to him that he continue.
Well, a- actually, he did uh, he did send out a a letter with the two selectmen in himself. And he noted in there that he was gonna provide the updates on Facebook, um that he was just gonna change the format and he was gonna do it.
Yeah, that's not enough. Yeah, there there aren't that many people on Facebook, really. I mean, I I I look, I don't always look at the town's Facebook. I rarely look at the town's Facebook, but. I do look at Facebook, but there are a lot of people that don't.
Right.
And I'm I'm one of them.
That's not enough.
I don't use social media.
Right, I get it.
So I'm 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 one of them, but um I I would hesitate to suggest that they're not making an effort. I think they're just doing it in a different format. Maybe it's something that is worthy of discussion that they would be willing to consider to to take a different look at how they might do it. But I did get the impression they were gonna make a concentrated effort to make sure they communicated stat, what was going on in the town.
Yeah, that's what they said, but I don't think you have to do it different. You can do both. And you don't have to do different. You can do more than one, so.
They all seem like pretty reasonable people that probably open to the suggestion if there's a lot of people that are interested in getting it in a different format. I don't, I don't know any of them very well at all, but um they all seem pretty open to making sure they were communicating as openly and effectively as possible. Their whole theme, I believe, was transparency, so hopefully they're open to some suggestions.
Um the locally sourced products, I I had thought of Nate about this. Um I'll send him another email. Um just because he had a contact that it sounded like he uh, somebody he knew that was kind of serving as a. Co-op leader or something of sort of a marketplace for um different locally sourced products in a town. So he was gonna talk to him about how we might be able to facilitate something like that in the town of North Stonington. But um I need to follow up with him because I haven't heard back and I didn't know the name. I couldn't remember the name of the person, like Seacore or Seac something. Um so I'll, I don't have much to report on that item. Um.
Do you mind if I pause for a moment and just go back to Tua? You made a suggestion on Earth Day.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I I I kinda liked it because I'm I'm I'm, you know, the comment I make to my wife is I'm not that touchy feely of a guy. But I actually do take Earth Day off and my habit is to walk around the streets of that I live on and pick up, you know. Garbage, you know, I pick up garbage off the side of the street and throw bags down and then go back and pick them up. Um so it's kind of an isolated little view of the world that that I have, but it would be nice to kind of, I don't know. This this town is so focused on farming and so focused on keeping the natural, you know, view of the town. I'd be surprised to find out they wouldn't be interested in in gathering up some resources to do things maybe in a different way and. Pay a little bit of attention to what Earth Day is trying to say.
So. So last um, last year for Earth Day, the Democratic Town Committee, we um. Um held a uh a cleanup, a trash pickup around town kind of thing. Um, you know, so the kids and I, we went down to Hewitt Farm. And we picked up garbage there, and then I treated them with some very expensive cookies from Gourmet Galley. But it made them aware and it got them out there and, you know, even though it was like two little uh grocery bags, you know. Um uh, yeah, I think it was a lesson learned for them, so um the small acts like that, I think, can make a big, big difference.
There are a lot of people who do either either with a group of half a dozen, well, not half a dozen, but three or four people or individually. That do pickups on Earth Day. Uh I do, I know a lot of people do, but the problem is. It doesn't last. The trash comes right back. It's awful.
Yeah, yeah. And that's just a a like a weekly occurrence on a winter dog, so that's just.
Well, that's the worst.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have any sort of, I don't even know if this would work, but do we have any sort of signage? You know, I've seen signs before where it says whether or not anybody is enforcing it, that's the problem. But I've seen signs that have said like, you know, littering and then it's a big accent, you know, fines up to a thousand dollars. Or whatever the law um indicates you can be fined for littering. Do we have any signs up or?
We we have, there's one here at the intersection of Rocky Hollow and Route one eighty-four. At that at that peninsula level triangle, there's a sign there, but I mean, people are gonna litter. Yeah, I mean, I think it hasn't happened yet, but I believe there's gonna be a deposit fee on on little um. I call them nips. Okay, I forgot, what's the word?
God, those things should be banned. They are the worst, the worst.
Yeah, so so there will be.
So angry.
There'll be a deposit, but I think if you're gonna throw it out, you're gonna throw it out. You're not gonna care about the five cents.
But someone will pick it up, because they'd be motivated to pick it up.
That's true.
That's.
I just had a funny, this is like not practical at all, but just like a funny thing that came into my head. Is if we had like a team of people with tennis rackets or like even bigger than tennis rackets. And that as people drove by, you just hit the can or the thing back to their car so that it would like dent their car. Or, you know, do something like crack their windshield or something and be like, well, this is what you get for littering. Obviously not a practical idea, but this, I had a funny image go through my head of just like.
A Bugs Bunny moment.
Hauling it back at their car. What do you get?
I always worry about the steps we take to limit the actions of others, because and I know this would be a popular comment, but. Putting a five cent deposit on a on a nip is gonna result in people turning around and going, then fine, I'll buy a bottle. And we know what they're doing with the nips because they're throwing them out the windows of their vehicle and the thought of them having a bottle is, you just. It all makes me nervous.
I I don't think it would increase the sale of bottles, but they they have the bottles too. And they throw it out because they're underage and they don't wanna get caught with the bottles.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, I don't know what the reasons for it are, but I see them on the side of the road too, and I I cringe every time I see. Nips and the nips and I I actually have seen occasionally a needle on the side of the road and that's terrifying, so. I'm not sure what the answer is. So it's a something that does have to be addressed, though, and and Earth Day is a nice way to be able to go out and, you know, pick some of that stuff up and take care of it. And make this town look as beautiful as it does on a fall, winter, spring and summer day. By the way.
There are a lot of, yeah, a lot of people really do that.
Yeah, they they do.
Does, uh I thought of something the other day because I was walking my dog at Hewitt and there's an area. That's kind, whatever, there's an area where people end up parking, because you know, so many different places that you could park and then walk. There was one in particular where I've seen trash, especially cans of things on multiple occasions. And I was thinking, oh, gosh, I was looking all around for a trash bin and there wasn't one. And I was thinking, well, I wonder if people would litter less if there was um like, and I didn't have a bag with me. So I was like, oh, I wish I, you know, there was just a place to to just put it in the trash, put it in a recycling bin or something. And it's Marion, is Marion Ricker the head of the um Hewitt Farm?
That's the community garden.
Oh.
Um it um, was it her her bit of wits, is that how you say it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I I mean, Alexa, I think it's kind of like the problem is coming to beach ad, you know, they didn't have a garbage can because you take what you bring.
Right.
But then people started dumping their garbage. But I think they finally had to give in and and put something out there because it it was so problematic. But really, that's, I think that's probably the premise is, you know, you just, whatever you bring in, you take out with you.
Right, right. Yeah, and then somebody's having to manage that trash bin.
Right.
Like, I hate to see full trash bins overflowing, you know, that don't get picked up regularly. I'd rather see no trash bin than a full trash bin.
Yeah, that's true. My lesson was just bring a bag next time, but I like, I I think of one thing, but I didn't have enough arms to pick up for, you know, the all of it. Um. Okay, but I like it, yeah, I think if we could do some sort of um, think about maybe some sort of Earth Day event. Even if it was broader, you know, more like. It may be a component that isn't, that is more of the like volunteer, you know, going out and doing trash pickup. But also sort of like an information sharing session on some of the stuff like the energy audit and other things that we're doing.
Some kind of, I can't think of a specific example, but between now and April, there's a lot of time. Some kind of event about repurposing some specific thing. You'd have to come up with a thing, but there's a lot of time between now and then. But repurposing rather than clean up kind of thing. And just have to think of what what that would be, but we have time to think of, think.
I think that would be great for us to sort of spearhead. Good idea.
Tua mentioned that it was the Democratic uh, you know, Town Committee that uh did an Earth Day event. Uh competition going between the Republican Party and the Democratic Party to see who could gather the most trash on Earth Day.
Everyone likes competition, especially me.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a funny idea. I like that. Friendly rivalry.
I think it's good.
It's fill a truck, right? Fill fill us that bed.
That's a really good idea. I like that.
Winners, losers buy the other team dinner. From all North Stonington community businesses, they would have to buy and purchase it from all North Stonington community business. I know, I know what my menu would be.
Where would you go?
Oh, so somewhere between Jonathan Edwards and the downtown. Uh pizzas, pizza place, the brewery. Maybe a little bit of both was, I I don't know, you know, this, it's always occurred to me that it's kind of funny. A lot of the communities around here have. What do they call them on the weekend when they have the farm stands? Um and I know. What?
Farmer's market.
Yeah, and I know we did it for a while. Do we still do it in North Stonington?
So we actually, I was on a subcommittee. It was a subcommittee of the Economic Development Commission that was on, um that was looking into. Um getting a farmer's market in town. And um the consensus basically was that, and we got some farmers input as well on this, that there were too many. Neighboring farmer's markets, that it was gonna be difficult for them to squeeze in yet another one in their rotation.
Yeah.
And um what we were going to focus on, and then the pandemic hit and then we kind of dissolved through the committee, was um. We were gonna focus on almost like a um tra- like a, almost like instead of a trail map, like a map of all the different. Um farms that sell directly their their produce where you could just stop in and get a little tour. And they'd have a little farm stand and that kind of thing, so at least it was someplace where people knew exactly where to go, what sells what, who sells what. What hours they have this farm stand open or whether it was just like come, you know, come and have honor system. Um so that was what where where we had kind of left off. Then I know that I think it was the brewery, if I'm not mistaken, that did do like a co-op for a certain. Um period of time. I don't think they're doing it anymore. Are they too long?
That was their plan, well, before they opened. That was his plan, that to do that, but it never really happened. Too many other things happened. They just got going with everything else, so they're, but that was the orig- that was his original plan. But I think a map would be wonderful. We need that.
A a virtual farmer's market, so to speak.
That's very good.
Yeah, I mean, there are so, there are so many places as I drive around town and look at the farms that I know do that type. Uh that have that type of offer, that would be great to know. So and to, I don't know who said it, but stating their hours would be great. Because I often am at the end of the driveway of somebody's home where they have a sign on it and I'm like, I don't wanna just drive up. I don't know if they're there.
Right.
So it's a, it, that's, that's a pretty cool idea, and if that's not sustainable, I don't know what is if you're using. Or just, that's, that's pretty neat.
I can talk to, again, when we sort of figure out who's leading your economic development mission, um because I feel like it's. They would have access to, Tua, correct me if I'm wrong, but they would have access to, um, you know. Who should we go to to solicit this information? You know, like, okay, what firms are we talking about that? Because I don't even know what all the firms are that sell stuff in the town.
Yeah, I know, I know, wondered their initiative is to um organize a a business directory. Um but that hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay, okay.
That was done a few years ago, but it's it's something that's gotta be kept up.
Yeah.
Is it something that's um on? The one that you referenced, Pat, is it online or where does one find it?
No, it was, it was older than that. I didn't mean a few years ago, sorry. A decade or so or two. A dec- decade, not years.
Well, that that sort of, that sort of falls in line with bullet number six, sustainable North Stonington website updates. Maybe that's the spot for it. A a virtual farmer's market, knowing where these uh businesses are, when they're open.
Right.
If there's a phone number to give somebody a call, I mean, if I could, I I'd buy all the available lamb in town. And stock it in my basement freezer and there's so few places that have it these days, so.
Nate sells lamb. Nate has lamb.
Who does?
Nate, the research, research.
So just, we used to, but not in the last two years. We did for thirty years, no more lamb.
It's my favorite. I eat it all the time.
Yeah. Now, somebody's gotta raise ducks. I would like some ducks on the table, I mean, not in my backyard.
I I I just like the eggs.
Oh, I like the ducks. Well, somebody does advertise duck eggs. I can't think who. I've seen it.
Yeah, there are a couple of people in.
Um, that was, this is just, I, uh, the only reason I had this on the agenda is because I did, after last meeting, give. Um, Jim Russell some additional things, like we had talked, the the Energize Connecticut. Something about conservation of water, the information about basic, Bay Street textiles, so it's more of a um. Solicitation for, whoa, that is not what I intended to go to. If you have anything else that you want me to, uh, you know, have Jim add, if you come across any articles, I I'm doing my. My shameless plug again for that. So, and then they, I think I asked him to.
Well, I I regret saying that I must, it must have been one of the meetings I missed. This is now on the town website. I I'm a little ashamed that I haven't gone to it and looked at it, so.
If you just, I actually don't know how to find it from the town's website. I just Google Sustainable North Stonington and then it comes up as the first um, item. And I had him add the the Sustainable um, States Community Energy Challenge. The fact that we're working on that, I had him add something on in terms of our initiatives. So he added that and then. Let's see, I think I, oh, and then I had him add, um, oop, wrong one. Sorry, bear with me. The Sustainable CT Certification Process, I had him add the fact that. Uh, we had, we received recognition, recognition for our brand certification during the. Megat Conference of Municipalities Annual Convention luncheon. So just to kind of give a status update for where we stood in the certification process. And yeah, I just wanted to, you know, continuing to give them some content to post on that. And Christine said, and again, I'm not on Facebook, so actually I don't even know if it was posted, but she said. I don't know if it's come out yet, but she said that they were going to make a plug for the Sustainable Committee, Sustainability Committee. And the Sustainable North Stonington site and and things like that, but I'll follow up to see if that ever went out. And whether it included everything that we want, including like the stuff about the energy audit. Pat, do you have any Palomero Pathway updates?
No, I don't. I've got, I've gotta get something to to augment what's on the town with, on the sustainable website there. And uh, I will get more when January or February when people are really going. But uh, we've had a little bit of progress, uh, there are one, two, besides me, there are. Three other people on the pathway in Main Street that have signed up and we've got the signs. And yeah, we'll, we'll get going more after the first of the year. But I I will address the town's website and get a little bit better on that, the page you just showed. Nothing else right now.
Okay, the last item I just had before I opened it up for anybody wanting to mention anything. And now I'm trying to find it, but um, I, we submitted the um. Uh, to Antoinette our meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two. Um, it's basically the first Tuesday of every month. Um, so what I was, let me see, I'll distribute that to everybody. And I'll adjust the meeting invitation. But um, basically, uh, my plan was, I think. The twenty-eighth, it sounded like was going to be kind of difficult anyway, and because we have, oh, here, here it is. There's a meeting, so the first January meeting, according to the schedule, it being the first Tuesday of every month, was um, going to be January fourth. So I think I'll cancel the meeting on the twenty-eighth and just resume on the fourth, if that's okay by everybody. Anything else that um, wanna touch upon before? I let you all go about your evening.
I've got a quick question for Pat. Butterfly will m- milkweed for monarch flowers, what does it mean when it says it needs to go through a period of cold stratification?
Uh, a lot of wildflowers, a lot of flowers that are native, live in our environment. So they don't germinate until they've been chilled. And I don't know, you can look it up as far as if you do it in your refrigerator, how long it has to be there. The other thing is just. It can, you can sow them now, just like nature sows them. You can't keep them in your um, desk and then plant them in the spring. They won't grow.
Okay, so you basically get the seeds.
You just need a cold period. As far as timing, you'd have to look it up, but yeah, that's all it means is you have, they, they need, they need winter.
We have no landscaping at our house, so it's been one of those things. I just looked at your link on your website and it's a bright flower.
Get a little, get a little quarter and break the dirt, dirt up loose and scatter seeds right now and see what happens.
You made a convert today.
I I tried to argue for um. Like, oh, like a wildflower situation for our lawn. My husband didn't go for it. I got vetoed, but that's all right. We have a lot of very um, bee and butterfly friendly planting, but. He didn't go for the, no. No offense, but.
I had partial success in in getting certain people here to belong to this. Partial success.
Alrighty, is I motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Well, I will let you all have your rest of your evening and I will uh, have a very. Happy holiday, Merry Christmas. And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Take good care, everybody.